Okay, we'd like to call to order the city council meeting of the State for City Council for April 15th. I would like to ask Councilman Gary Lewis to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Reverend Eachoff. He's on his way to the first half of Combat District. So, please.
That's what I was saying. The Reverend for God, you've told me God, I apologize, thank you again, but it's blessed opportunity to be in another city council meeting. We pray to tell God for our national, our state, as well as our local, regional authorities and the government body. We pray to tell God for those that have gathered here tonight at this meeting, which is recently in order, and dear God, the Reverend, you are the greatest, as far as the bureaucracy is concerned. We pray now for this council and for this mayor, this great city, and the government in which you have been to do. Pray for those that are in harm's way, military, and that's on Jesus' side.
Amen. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move to the part of the agenda number three, which is recognitions and public presentations. And Councilman Britt, before we get to A, just mentioned to me about the guests we have in the audience today. I mean, believe it or not, we usually don't have this many people at our meetings, so we're glad to have you here. So, I'm going to ask Councilman Britt to do that.
Sure. Tom, professor here, Tom Kajde, and I think his class is here either because it's the last, one of the last meetings before the semester.
It's the only one they had left.
There you go. I'm seeing. American government teacher, anybody enjoys having him as a teacher? Say, "Yeah, yeah."
Yeah. That was a little lukewarm.
Welcome.
Yeah, we're glad to have you all here. Item A, under recognitions and public presentations, I'm going to ask Alan Olbrue and Kelly Collinsworth, I guess, come forward to talk to us about Spring into Statesboro, including the Great American Cleanup.
That's great. A lot of work is going into it. We just wanted to announce that this council and encourage council and the city and city employees to kind of participate and enjoy this event. It's really the biggest one we've done. We've combined a lot of organizations together, so if you want to think market calendar for Saturday, April 26th, at 9:00 a.m., a big kickoff. And we really appreciate a lot of work that Robert Singel has done in terms of governance. But we do, it's got to be, we closed the streets off for the morning, we've got a lot of vendors and activities going on. This is a great partnership with Georgia Southern as well, because it's kind of a main part of Spring in Statesboro, their kids' activity and events. We also have the farmer's market, that'll be, I believe that will be TSU Day, the farmer's market. So, it's got that, as well as we're having a tree planting ceremony with our tree board at 11:00. So, all those groups are coming together, it'll be a great day. We look forward to seeing you guys there. It's one of the events that actually not only gets our community involved, it brings a commitment to our city to WAC. So, Kelly's really been the heart, soul behind it, people's all organized, focused, and she can help us with this tree.
Thank you all for your time this evening. And KBB's contribution to Spring in Statesboro is maybe just in our annual Great American Cleanup. This is our 14th year hosting this fantastic event. Typically, we've had about 1,000 volunteers come out. Usually between 600 and 800 people, City of Statesboro, each municipality as well, portal, register, et cetera. But it's a tremendous opportunity and a tremendous event, and our goal with people and people is to not only eradicate litter, but to foster a sense of community and to show people that these don't have to be chores and don't have to be Monday tasks. So, often picking up someone else's garbage in no way, shape, or form is fun or entertaining. But through our partnerships with the SDA, Georgia Southern, farmer's market, et cetera, we're able to create an event and make it a fun day for the entire family, for our Southern students, for everyone. So, we'll kick it off at 9:00 a.m. on the courthouse lawn here in Statesboro. It's going to be fantastic. We have the school rock playing from Fly Dot Music. Subway has provided lunch, graciously, for all the volunteers, Chick-fil-A's at breakfast. We've got some really nice T-shirts for everyone who'll come out. And we are so excited about the event yet again. So, please join us. Our hot seat invitations, we will hopefully have received them. If you can just shoot me a quick email and we'll phone call them, we'd be happy to put you on the agenda for the people ceremony. Representative Jan Tankersley from Bullock County will be our chairman this year. So, please, one, two, three.
So, as long as we've got all these people in here, how do you volunteer?
You can join the fun on keepbolybeautiful.org. Go to our website, click on the Calendar tab, follow the link, click on the link, register your team. We'll send you the email with all the specifics. Super easy, it's painless, there's free food involved, and it's truly the most fun you can have, picking up someone else's garbage.
Tom, you think this is a civic duty that could be extra credit?
Yes.
Is that possible?
If they would contact Caroline McMillan at the East Georgia Statesboro Center, I'm sure she's our contact person, and she'd line me up. I'm sure you know Caroline, yeah, she'll line it up.
There you go. Is he all there on the board line?
Raise your hand if you need extra credit. Thank you.
But yeah, we're excited. While I have the podium, the Great American Cleanup in Spring in Statesboro will be my last event. At the helm of KBB, I am resigning effective the 26th. So, I just wanted to say that it's been such a pleasure to work with you all, and I have had a blast the past four years. I have learned so much and have been truly, truly enjoying my time. And Statesboro is home to me, Bullock County, Gordon-Rays, and it's been such a pleasure to serve my hometown, and I appreciate all of this support.
Kelly, tell them how you're slumming and leaving here, what you're going to go do.
Well, I have accepted a position at Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, Maryland.
Well, congratulations. Good for you. Okay, our next agenda item is public comments. Do we have anybody that's registered for public comment regarding an agenda? Okay. We will move to item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll hold a minute, let everybody peruse the consent agenda before we ask for a motion.
We have to approve, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number six is consideration of a motion to approve Task Order Number Two, and this item was tabled for our last meeting. And before we ask for a motion, I'm going to ask our city engineer, Robert Cheshire, to update us on this particular motion, perhaps update us on what you've done since we tabled it at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have Courtney and Ron here from EPT, consultants, if we have any specific questions that I can't answer, and I appreciate the fact that you tabled it and did vote against it. I noted your concerns and have dropped back and made sure that we've got Task Order Two in the way that it's written. It's going to be that you get, we get a lot of public information, a lot of public education. We also went back and resent Task Order, the results of Task Order Number One, as well as the presentations that were made to each of you. But beyond that, we would like to meet either individually, whatever format that you like during Task Order Two. If it is approved, we can meet at a work session and we can disseminate that information from Task Order Number One and give you some more specifics on it. So, at this point, we're just asking to move into Task Order Two, which will include the education process for the public and yourself, and it'll get more specific as far as how much, if we did the stormwater, Kelly, how much would it, would it? Right now, we're somewhat making some estimates on how much that funding mechanism would produce, but we will get more specific in the next one and start answering. I think use more questions before you ultimately would vote, if that is the mechanism you chose to look at in somewhere around December of next year.
The, just basically agreeing with what Robert said, this is a step that's absolutely necessary as far as the educational process is concerned and does not commit the city and mayor council to taking that step of actually formulating the AES stormwater utility. But I think it, well, it does educate, so if it's, that proves it's successful and the citizens understand what the city is trying to do, that they think that to that point, then, I'm going to ask for, you know, that council to consider that stormwater utility. This is a take us to that point. And as Robert said, as Courtney is here, and is answering any specific questions, we'll give our own review. Councilor Shon, fine.
Do y'all have any questions, Courtney?
I got the, I don't know, Ms. Sue, did you, did you get that email from me? Send those out by chance. No, I got the stormwater in from Americas and Bad Oss, and I sent those out, which I guess I apologize. And they just, from what they said, it does, this goes into a long, utilities, a long document. So, and I guess the, kind of the first thing, Mayor, is this is our first step to even identifying it. I guess the main thing is we're not adopting it. We are agreeing to look at it, but also this is going to kind of lay out the areas we know, this is going to further say what we can do to fix them. So, if we went with this and didn't do the stormwater utility, we've got some good information.
Yes, definitely.
And that's what I, and that's what I asked Robert about, was ultimately, when we're done, when we know what we need to fix and then make a decision on how we want to fix it, will this give us that information to do that? And to be frank, Robert responded with, we pretty much have most of that information in Task One, is that correct?
Yes.
Because we did actually have a lengthy conversation on this. And Task Two would be more along the lines of how would you set it up? Would that be fair? So, I mean, I just want to be, you know, straightforward with that.
I mean, unless I'm not looking at Task Two right. Task Two is essentially, this is what your utility is going to look like, we're going to build it for you. Whether you voted or not, you've got a utility.
Would that be, how would you describe it?
I mean, you've got the public outreach campaign, you've got the master cap file development, that all sounds like setting up a utility.
It would, yeah.
Nick, come on.
Yes, it would. The Task Two contains everything that you would need to have a completed utility that was billing. So, if you voted in Task Two and we actually completed every single task, at the end of it, you would be billing, folks, for stormwater utility. That takes that to the point of billing. However, you would actually vote before we got to that point, so if you were to go through this exercise and actually vote no for stormwater utility, you wouldn't expend the entire task order form because you wouldn't complete all the tasks. Some of the policy work would be done after the fact, because the customer notification, obviously, wouldn't occur. What you would end up with would be additional GIS data that would be useful, not just for stormwater purposes, but actually for your billing database, especially if you aren't going to update your software, which I understand is going to happen, so produce a GIS database of your utility bills, which would be, your IT department would be very thrilled to have. But yeah, you're correct, you would have a completed utility under the task report.
But the contract does have an out, we can stop it?
Yeah, you would have completed all. If you vote no, you're not going to extend the entire amount.
That's right. We just take it as far as the vote.
What do you think?
How much is, ooh, go ahead.
Well, you're essence, I can handle it.
How much is Task Two A?
Yeah, I have it here.
B, C, D, one. How much would Task Two cost up to the point where we can turn off the hose?
Should I split it?
We're in the water business, right?
Okay. So, you would do probably about half the education, you would do a master cap file. So, it'd probably be about, about 45 of it.
Of those.
Still a little more than that.
And that's just up until I have them. Now, we won't hold it now.
Do y'all have any other questions? Does council want to table this, or do you want to entertain a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the Task Order Number Two of Professional Services Agreement, as well as a planning group, an amount of $75,000, $70,000, as this was the development of Stormwater Management.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, by saying aye.
Well, I mean, I guess again, my concern is, how likely is the stormwater utility coming? You know, I mean, this is not going to be something that's going to be, even with a public campaign, I mean, I know people are upset about ditches, but adding another utility is not, not unweedy, you know what I mean? When you're talking about personnel, we just had the budget yesterday, we were, certainly we were hiring 30, 40 more people. We're worried about our budget expenditures, and here we are, creating a whole new department. Certainly something to talk about or think about, I think. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're creating an enterprise fund, that's number one. It's kind of scary to me, but we can set without enterprise fund, if we need to. But I do think, I was one of the ones that were on the table last time. After looking at it, I just feel that this is, we're not going to have the opportunity to fix some of the things that we have to fix without coming up with a utility. And, you know, I'm older than I would laugh today, you know, that ditch is three feet closer to his house than it used to be. You know, Gary's got areas in his neighborhood, and there's no way to correct those.
I have, you also were, you're there.
So, I think the only way to fix that, and I think you make a point, though, the money to fix those was not there yesterday. The only way that money's going to come is from, I think, a creation of this utility. Now, we can dial that utility up and down per month, all kinds of numbers that we did. You know, I've got the numbers rooted, and talked about it a little high, and a little scared of those, but at least we can put on books, we have it down the, above the customer or something, I think that's a chance. Also, I think there's some opportunities there for us to have some responsibility and sustainability in our constructions. And, you know, and I guess, how do we say this nicely, this also allows, gives us the opportunity to address some of the property owners that refuse to make our city more attractive with the parking lots and the lack of trees. This gives us the chance that Mandy doesn't have to say, you know what, okay, you don't want to put trees in? Fine, it's, it's now $55,000 for a stormwater utility. Or whatever we can do. And it gives us an opportunity, we hope, to fix that, and it gives us some teeth.
Well, I agree. I agree with you, Councilman Britt. I mean, we need to give ourselves tools in the toolbox and then responsibly use them. And I would hate to take this particular tool out prematurely, and I think this study would allow us not to do that. I'll go back with what Wayne said about, you know, our EPA standards and what we're going to have to adhere to that's coming down the pipe, and, you know, we may need to give ourselves this tool.
Yeah, that's kind of.
I mean, that's, and that's nothing that we can, we can do anything about.
Would it be, you both have this tool and not need, and they need it, not ask?
It's an option.
We can't determine what Mandy calls it.
Yeah, to me, it's the most equitable option that we have right now, and that's just from my experience with it so far. We'll present that to you in another few months, and you can make that same decision and see if you're at the same place I am. But I was, I was opposed to it 10 years ago, but I've been exposed to this issue now for another 10 years, and after I looked at the equitable and the other cities that are doing it.
Let me be clear, I've got a lot of ditches up on my district, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, so please, please understand that. But we're creating a utility that's going to live on in perpetuity, as long as the city of Statesboro is around. And when you, you know, it shouldn't be just the kind of thing that's on the agenda one week, and we pass it, and all of a sudden, we've got a stormwater utility, you know, that, I'm not really sure what's.
I think that's, that's where I'm, we need to step up and educate you and make sure that you feel like you've got the information you need to make that decision when the time comes. I don't disagree with you.
See how many pitchforks are going to come out, too.
Well, part of it is. You know, we're going to have, have a many public hearings, and if the public doesn't have a stomach for it, you know, they'll certainly have an opportunity to admit that.
Well, again, my, why my concern was, why write up an ordinance that the public's going to rally with, you know?
I'm not here necessarily to sell it, but since we are talking about the utility, I mean, there are a lot of entities in town that don't pay property taxes at all, and those are the entities that will, everybody will be paying this instead of just those that are on the property tax, who have to bear that burden of stormwater coming from those other entities.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Item number seven, the consideration of a motion to authorize Mayor to enter a franchise agreement on behalf of the city of Statesboro with Padlock Media. And Alan, I'm going to, did you like the agreement?
I did, I did agree. Well, I borrowed, I just said.
Efficiencies, we like efficiencies.
Now, this is a franchise agreement, yes, with Padlock, so actually Campus Communications Group, and Padlock, they are considering it, they have a lot of consideration, too, their lawyers are looking at it, I haven't heard back from them, they're going to contact me if they have issues with it.
Is this substantially different to any of our, other of our enterprise agreements, or franchise agreements, excuse me?
The rate, the amount we collect is the same. I think it protects the city a lot more in that it has certain requirements, has to report to us their income, verify that it's done, and so we, so we simply don't get a check every year and say, this is, this is the amount they have to, somebody signs off on it and says, you know, this is the amount of money we owe you, certified, public, you know, things like that. It provides a lot more, and then work more closely, I believe, with city engineers and have their stuff in the other one, and acknowledge that, those things.
So, to sum up, it's better than the agreements we have.
Yeah, I think this is, this franchise agreement is a template, I think, we want to use going forward.
Oh, good to hear. Is there, is there any issue with us approving or denying Padlock Media when the contract says campus communication? Or do you need us to word that in a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement that's in the packet.
Bio-Optics franchise agreement?
Yes.
Campus Communications Group.
And there may be some minor revisions that may remain, I would say substantially similar to this. They have a, unless you want it brought back, if we make sort of minor changes in the agreement to satisfy their demands.
I don't see why.
I trust your normal amount of trepidation, so.
President, so, okay, so, Councilman Britt was used his big word for the day. Okay, so let me make sure I've got, let me make sure I have the motion right, Alan, okay? A consideration of a motion to authorize Mayor to enter a franchise agreement on behalf of the city with Campus Communications Group not to be substantially different from what is presented in the packet today. Okay?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Agenda item made is a consideration of a motion for the sole source purchase under the state purchasing contract of motor, rural radios, and hearing, and public works, not Dixie, $25,000. Jason.
Mayor, Council, Jason Williams, Public Works. Before you, as I like to know, motion for purchase of radios. As your lawyer, about a year ago, Bullock County began a process converting to the 700 megahertz radios from 800, including all the public safety divisions and departments, and the city followed suit with our public safety. And so, this is just another step with the city to make sure we maintain communication, emergency personnel, public safety personnel, and that transition, so to speak. This is purchasing for six radios, under state purchasing contract, we've got enough seats, $25,000, this is approximately, prices of $24,000, but I'm not sure of all the accessories, additional battery and center that we would need, but we will maintain that $25,000 is currently.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Six radios?
Do what now?
Six radios, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Are they waterproof?
Aye.
It's a $4,000 budget radio.
Yeah, this is our state first contract, which is only guaranteed, I assume, through King Guardia, it goes out from the child.
Are you studying common corals, I don't know. Three blocks of that.
Six of them, a little.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Alan Lee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
No way. Two things can last more than six months, right?
I think, I think when these come in, can you please bring one for us to look at?
Oh, yeah, really. I know, you know, it looks just like an entire truck.
I want, we want to.
Or get back for us to use. I mean, at least it's excavator, I mean, we know.
No, I'm back to say, we're not going back to the rate.
It's a roof rate.
No, we're talking.
Buffalo roof rate.
No, 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 we digress. Okay. Agenda item number nine is a consideration of a motion to reject bids for a vacuum excavator based on specifications not being met by all submitted bids. Mr. Frank.
Yes, ma'am. We advertise as the ordinance, we own all seven items for a vacuum excavator. This basically excavates around existing facilities, clears debris, and excavates repairs, until this would be the natural part of it. We rarely have ever rejected all bids, but we went to extreme to extend the view that we have a question and a demand section. It was very clear, both vendors, the specs we asked for, they had more than ample opportunity to respond and raise questions, and we feel there's no other option, to be fair, because purchasing is to get a good price, but it's also to be fair to reject all bids and to rebid the site. It will be rebid, same fuel price they're validating.
Was the spec or price?
Specifications, I would reject.
You asked for six horsepower, they give you four, something like that.
Well, you know, one, we asked for certain UWR trailer, the other, certain level of performance specs, and to be honest with you, some of them, if they brought it to attention, we would have issued an amendment and basically changed it with our specs, but they did not follow the regulations.
And to be clear, we have to officially reject these? Okay.
It takes a lot to make Darren mad.
I agree. Darren, please. I will.
If Darren's a little frustrated, then.
If pleases the chair, I'll go ahead and make that motion to reject a bid for the vacuum excavator.
It pleases the chair. Do we have a second?
I've got, I've got a good place here. I'd say good.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We work in the pleasure of people, Mayor.
All right, Dan, just stay there. Number 10, consideration of a motion to award a contract to purchase two biofuel CNG trucks to wait for an amount of $26,761 each, for a total of $10,522. Would you like to tell us about that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Reissue and advertising, and going through for two biofuel CNG F-150 or equivalent trucks. As stated, the budget for these items was possibly $20,000 each, standard fuel system, but since we're in the CNG and we have a fuel station, so it works, and we now went to trash collection, CNG-driven vehicles, we're starting to go this way, and even our cars respect for the prep package. But this came in, all local vendors. But this came in, all local vendors were contacting and emailing an opportunity. The lowest bid, as stated, is wait for twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-one per vehicle, or fifty-three thousand five twenty-two, or two. I will add that the vehicles are approximately seven thousand dollars more than a standard vehicle. Well, and we're looking to save you over fourteen thousand dollars over the twelve-year life of each vehicle, so we're on net approximately seven grand, based on the fuel usage history of these two areas. So we recommend to wait for twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-one per vehicle.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I have a motion to award the contract to biofuel CNG trucks, wait for it.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Well, there is, who's standing there? We're going to go to a portion of the meeting, which is other business from city council, so I think the first order business that's there is already up there to talk about the renewal of the property and casualty coverage for the city.
If you remember, previous year ago, we did it out of the brokerage service, these reinsurance. This is simply the renewal, it would take effect another person. After gathering info and meeting, our broker, Glenn Davis, came up with, last year's premium was three hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars. This year's recommendation for our general liability is three hundred fifty-four thousand one eighty. It will change our carrier from name to Travelers, over the one beacon, which is the one of it, home company very strong, very high rated. Given our experience in the past year, we're reducing approximately ten, ten percent, basically thirty-eight thousand dollars less in our premium last year. In addition, our fire service equipment is covered by a company, VFIS. It will remain the same. Last year's premium was right at thirty thousand, it'll be two hundred dollars short of thirty-five thousand, so it will go up by a thousand expense. But when you combine the two, really, thirty-three thousand dollars less in premium this year, the premium here, even with any things that had a factor in it, the, the one beacon, we will be under one roof, one company, won't be partied out from two of your carriers, those are the ones, obviously, the old garage. So the recommendation is to approve one beacon at a cost of premiums, three hundred fifty-four thousand one eighty, and approve VFIS for fire for thirty-four thousand eight hundred and one dollars. And just to explain that a little further, the, the fire, the equipment is only covered. The general liability, personal liability is covered under the other. They prefer your VFIS as to numerous fire engines, it provides free premium, and when there is an equipment loss, it replaces that fire engine at the new engine cost, doesn't throw rate it down. It also covers the equipment on the fire engine, bottom half. So fire departments, very widespread, feel with the VFIS.
And I want to say one thing about this, because when the, when the bid originally came in, there were a couple of options, but there was a little bit of a price spread there, and the lowest option was a combination of several companies. I say several, I think it's four, under the different coverages that the city needs. And Glenn Davis did go back and renegotiate a little bit, a little bit with one beacon to get them down, so that we would have a single carrier. And so when we're looking at, one of the things that we talked about was really trying to get a handle a little bit more on our risk management, our loss control, and this will allow us to do it through one company versus trying to figure out who's supposed to be doing what with what. And so I think for the city, this, this was truly the best solution, and I will have to say that Glenn Davis did a good job in going and renegotiating and getting that one carrier down to be very similar to the amalgamation of other companies to get us the least amount of premium, so.
This will take time, but.
Let me ask, was this a side benefit of what we did a year ago, which was going with a broker who could go out and shop the entire market?
The broker contract, we just finished first year three.
Right.
So this is a function of what they provide, contract.
So just to give you a little credit, this is what we were trying to do when we pushed to a broker concept as opposed to a competitive bid?
Yes.
Well, well done.
And is that, is that being why it's not on like a agenda item? Or why?
This is a fifty contract, this is already approved.
Okay.
This is just basically their offering, it's what we paid them for, so it's, it's not, so it's out there.
So are we, are we making a motion to accept this?
We're making a motion to accept this coverage at that price. That's what we're making a motion for.
So by us doing the brokerage, I guess I kind of thought, I guess I thought that by doing the brokerage, we kind of automated it, about hiring to do that. Not mine.
Well, I mean, but they do, they do present three options to you.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are, you know.
So we're selecting their.
We're accepting, we're, yeah, we're selecting the options.
Actually, a record, if you see.
So a motion to approve the new, is it P and C?
Probably in capital.
The new P and C coverage as outlined by Glenn Davidson, yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, I'd like to bring one matter to Mayor Council. Resolution, I would like, our council considered our motion to approve, and if I could agree, may I just simply explain, did reach the resolution, being resolved by Mayor, and City Council, the City of Statesboro, that Steve Heiskus is hereby appointed to serve as the city's voting delegate on the municipal gas authority of Georgia's election committee, with authority of cash, of cast all votes, to which the city is entitled. Frank Parker is appointed as an alternate voting delegate this fifteenth day of April two thousand fourteen. And like I said, we do need to appoint a voting delegate. If there's specific questions, Steve should answer those, but again, I'd like that resolution considered by Council, and I'd like a vote on it if we do.
My name is not the MDI representative. Yes.
Do I have a motion? Do you all have a second?
Second, a motion, motion to approve resolution two thousand fourteen dash oh six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business from City Council?
I have questions. There's what book my wife is reading.
Yeah, I know.
She kind of pays us no attention.
I did, I sent a note over to Frank, I said, what book is Marsha reading?
She would be done with it before the meeting there.
What, what's your, what's your, what's the, what's your book of the month?
I just posted on the insurance, gave it back to Glenn Davis, and he's like, oh.
Okay.
Make a motion, may I join the executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to executive session.
Make a motion, allow you to negotiate.
Okay.
Call back.
All right, we'll call back to order. City Council meeting from executive session.
You got it.
You got it.
No action, take it. May I make a motion to approve or to allow a city manager partner to negotiate a contract with the city attorney on the lead part, and come back with a recommendation? Have a look at it.
Second then?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that's rushed to make public comment? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We could wait, just, she's got to go to the, no, we're good.
I heard, I heard, I heard a motion.
Motion to delay.
I'm pretty sure I heard that.
No, 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 no.
Motion to approve, team?
All right, wait.
Sure, I'm back.